We'll call the Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order June 10th at 7:11 PM. Please stand if able for the Pledge of Allegiance. A moment.
The United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty, justice, and moral.
Item 1A, official meeting notification, Dr. Royer.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices into the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notices also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Item 1B, Clerk Barney, roll call.
Ewer.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Barney's here. Loaf.
Here.
Medved.
Here.
Pollak.
Here.
Thinking about them.
Here.
Item 2, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item 3, reports. 3A, district administrator update. Dr. Chris Royer.
Thank you. We officially concluded the 23-24 school year last Friday with a half day. Kids went home, teachers went home, and summer has begun. Last week, and thank you to Mr. Ewer and Mr. Barney, you've joined us at each of the schools, and we provided service awards for employees at 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years and those retiring. I didn't do the math, but it's well over 1,000 years almost of service in the school district between all six of our buildings. And it was just great to, you know, honor those employees, those teachers, those aides, administrators, office staff, food service, some custodians for their service and dedication to our school district. So, we're excited to start summer work now. Kind of drives me into my next topic, summer projects. There's a lot of year-end reporting happening in every department in the next couple of weeks as the fiscal year closes out, as well as student data and other reports from each of the various departments. And then in our schools, now that everyone's gone, our summer buildings and grounds projects will kick off and get started there. But we do start summer school on Monday at Kennedy Middle School. So there's going to be kids back in the buildings, as well as teaching staff back as well. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate Cody Schmidt for winning the Division I Golf Championship. I think it's quite an honor to be the number one golfer in Division I in the state of Wisconsin. He had that honor last week at the WAA competition, so congratulations to Cody. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Item B, Germantown High School graduation. Apparently that's me. We were able, two Sundays ago, to honor the graduates of 2024. It was a pretty well-attended event. It was exciting to see the entire community come out for that, and a lot of staff there. I just wanted to say thank you for the students who got themselves through it, and probably even more so maybe some of the staff and the families that helped get them through that, or to that point. Everyone gets there on their own, or in some form or fashion, but they got to the finish line, and it was exciting to see those smiles come across the stage and go down and greet their parents, so thank you for that. I will add, the following Thursday, we were able to have the promotion ceremony for the eighth grade, not graduate, but promotions, at the fieldhouse for the first time. Two kind of fun things that came out of that, and some really good feedback we heard from the communities. One, the whole class could be there at the same time, which was exciting, and two, it was a good welcome to their new facility and school, so exciting that we could change that process a little bit and offer that for those students. Item, we'll move on with that. Reports C, performing arts center update. Ms. Ellis. Ooh, she's quick today.
Hi, thanks. I am here today to give a PAC update. I will try to keep it quick. It's going to be a review of kind of a few of the main points from the last season, some financial data, and then some of the topics and the preliminary ideas for next season. So this is a rough idea of the usage of the theater. So we're, you know, almost half and half with community events and rentals, a lot of high school use and school meetings and such. You can see that breakdown moving on. I just broke this down for my sake because it's starting to get really complicated, but we have a lot of major events. There are still many, many getting added. This is when I do all the rental contracts for next year, and I keep getting them, so we are getting very full, and this does not include, again, daytime use, daytime meetings. This is concerts, big recitals, outside rentals, technical rehearsals, so I'm here a lot. Next slide. This is a review of our high school drama season from the past years. You can see the attendance there, and yeah, just a review of the three shows. We've been doing two plays and a musical every year. This past year was the first year we held the middle school musical here at the PAC. That's going to happen again next year, so the kids really enjoyed that. We were able to carve out a section of time for them to be in here, so that was really great. This is just a really quick review of our outside groups. We are open for accepting rentals right now. We do have a lot. We do a lot of dance recitals, piano recitals. We have musicals coming in. We've got the Nutcracker that always comes in in December, Indian dance recitals, and of course, a community like the band, and dance program. And this is not everything. We do some other smaller rentals as well. This is a review of our community series events. We've been doing this to some degree for the few years. Obviously, COVID was kind of challenging, so the numbers are a little hard to sort of gather. I went ahead and made a graph of our attendance. I have been doing this on a very, very low budget as we've been trying to reach out and grow our local attendance for these events. The Live in the Lobby was our comedy show buffet. It was intended to be a more intimate event. It was local comedians, which was great, and I think the people that were there were very receptive to that event, so they were happy about that. We had the January Jam concert, which was some local bands donated their time to hold a performance here, and that was pretty successful. And we also held a multicultural festival, which had a whole bunch of student participation, which was just great to see. It was a fun night. There's lots of pictures online from that. So that was just a review of how that kind of all came together, that is all Fund 80 community events that we host. Moving forward, we are trying to expand the PAC community series into a more robust event season, so we have started a community advisory team, and so far, you can see the members listed up there. It is open to anyone that would like to participate. Please email me. We'd love to have you. But we are talking about a number of different events, and we are meeting again this week to hopefully finalize some things and look at some different options. So it's a really exciting time to be looking at all of those, and this is obviously a big increase in what we've done in the past, so we're very excited about that. This is my just really rough idea of PAC expenses and revenues. So you can see that rental revenue. We did have a really big renter that came in in the 22-23 season that didn't come back, but I actually have another one to replace them, and several more adding on, so I think that number might actually be higher than what I have projected here for this year. And then the Fund 80 costs increasing largely because we are hoping to have that big event season this year. Moving on, we have this summer coming up. We have Ariscat's Kids, which currently has, I believe, 28 students enrolled, which is fantastic. And we have Anastasia, which is geared towards our high school age. There's still enrollment open for that. I know we're looking for more kids to participate in the Anastasia camp, so if you know anybody, you do not need to be a Germantown resident. You can just go onto our ticket page and register, and we'd love to have you. It's going to be a really great camp, and we're really looking forward to presenting that with our kids. We also have Family From Fridays. We've been doing this for a long time. It's free movies and theater. You can come, you can bring snacks, you can buy snacks and concessions if you prefer. We have games in the lobby, and this is what we're presenting for the summer. There will also be more movie nights coming up in the winter as well. You may have saw when you walked in, we did get the piano approved. It is here. It's beautiful. We love it. Thank you to everybody that donated and made that possible. We also updated the keyboard sign in the lobby, if you want to take a look at that. But yeah, we are really proud of this addition and really excited to use it again, use it next school year for the first time. Quick look at our volunteers. This facility couldn't run without all the volunteers that dedicate their time. Special shout-out to those folks up there who volunteered well above and beyond most of our regular people. But yeah, we ran with 71 volunteers this year, with 782 total hours at least recorded, sometimes from show up and help, which was great, but that's what I had in my log, and those are open to middle schoolers, high schoolers, and just community members. If you're looking for a way to stay active, you get to see a show for free, which is great. And then just some contact information for the theater. Our Facebook page is great, great way to find pictures and find out what's going on, but we also have the website, which is updated regularly as well. Any questions?
So the new piano is the one that's sitting in?
That is, that is the piano, yes.
The photo in here, it was on the stage for the photo?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure I sent the right photo out to the family.
Absolutely. We are building a protective box on the stage that it's going to live in, that so it's can't be touched or messed with, except when it's being pulled out for approved use, but I thought everybody might want to see it.
Did it make it in time for the middle school concerts?
It did not, and sadly, I found out, the new recommendation is they wanted to wait three weeks before it was tuned, so they didn't want to play with an untuned piano, which is very reasonable. But it'll be ready for the next round of shows and talk.
We saw a social media post. Do we know who was playing it?
That was me.
Fantastic. It was pretty good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Item 4, citizen comment. I do have one. Mr. Canestra, one of our staff. I can read all the instructions, or I think we know with one speaker, we have three minutes, and be nice-ish.
Yeah, hello. Jamie Canestra, teacher at Germantown High School, GEA representative today. Just want to mention a few things. We kind of talked about teacher support, those type of things, and I guess one thing we're looking for sometimes to make us happy when it comes to coming to these meetings and we hear what's going on, maybe a little more teacher support from, let's see, people from above the teacher point of view. Some people to come and look at things from our side and actually state it out loud at the meetings, maybe our point of view a little bit more. The kind of example I have is really go think back to, let's say, the April Personnel Committee meeting, when you're presenting the new teacher comp model. What we're kind of looking for maybe when that stuff comes up, the new comp model, I mean, one of the goals is to increase teacher retention. Again, and that's been very important to everybody. It's good for us, it's good for you. I think that was a great start. When we're looking for teacher support, what I guess we want to see, or maybe hear sometimes, is it's being presented, one thing being presented is there's going to be no longer compensation for Bachelor plus 15, or Bachelor plus 30, or Masters plus 15, Master plus 30. It's kind of that time that it'd be nice if we had one person kind of speak up and say, with a goal of teacher retention, we're taking out areas of compensation. And that's kind of what we're looking for. And again, and then whoever's presenting it, they'll have a reason for it, and that'll sound good, everything will be fine, but I think that's something coming from above a teacher would be nice to see. Hey, this person's kind of on our side, too. They're looking at things from a teacher's eyes, how it comes off from a teacher, and now what happens after that is fine, and it goes forward, everything's good, but I think that's one of the little things going forward, I think, can help with what, how we work with each other. I think knowing there's somebody saying, hey, and is that going to help teacher retention? Somebody else will explain, somebody will talk, there'll be a conversation, and that's great. And then we feel like, hey, look, somebody up there is saying, is looking at this from our point of view. So that's kind of what I'd like to say is, is hopefully going forward, we'll get maybe a little more of that, somebody kind of standing up and saying, hey, this is the teacher's look from it, is this right, is this wrong? And those things going forward would be nice. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Item 5, consent agenda. I'll read, I'll read through them. You'll hear a motion on that, and then we can have some discussion around if anything wants to get pulled out. So item 5, consent agenda. A, approval of May 2024 meeting minutes, open session only of closed session meeting. B, approval of May 20th, 2024 meeting minutes, full board meeting. C, approval of May 28th, 2024 meeting minutes. D, approval of teacher resignations. E, approval of teacher contracts. F, approval of donations.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Mr. Barney, what's the motion? Thinking about them with the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a highlight of the donations if possible.
For sure. This evening, we have four donations. The first coming from MacArthur PTA for $8,880.42 for field trips for our first, second, third, fourth, and fifth graders at MacArthur. County Line PTA donated $1,954.05 for field trips to kindergarten, first grade, and PE students. Brad Debnicka donated $1,500 for transportation for GHS track activity. And Johnson's Nursery provided, donated $250 towards the Germantown Girls Swim and Dive Team.
Fantastic. It's amazing. Every monthly, say it, but the amount of money that comes in in donations is impressive, to say the least. Mr. Noack, can you help us with D, approval of teacher resignations, and E, approval of teacher contracts?
Sure.
Personnel will probably touch on it, but we could hit those topics here.
Sure. In regard to teacher resignations, there are four resignations listed. This is a unique time in that these are, in the case of the first three resignations, these are regular contract, contracted teachers who are offered contracts for next year. Those contracts are due June 15th. They've identified that they are not interested in moving forward, so their contracts are sunsetting. The last one is, is a limited-term contract, which involved a resignation.
Of those four, do we have replacements, or we'll work through the natural process of the summer?
We will work through the natural process.
Okay. And E, approval of teacher contracts.
Yes, so teacher contracts, we have a number of them this evening. Pull it up quickly. Many of these contracts are limited-term contracts that have rolled into regular contracts, so they're people who are now familiar faces in our district, which is really exciting for them to now be in regular sort of permanent kind of, kinds of roles. I'll go through them with name, school, and position. First is Helen Hulsey, MacArthur Elementary Art Teacher. Nicole Pinzer, Germantown High School Special Education Teacher. Annie Willbanks, Germantown High School English Teacher. Lucas Halasek, Kennedy Middle School Seventh Grade Literacy Teacher. Michael Warren, Rockfield Elementary Fourth Grade Teacher. Erin Hagan, Germantown High School Social Studies Teacher. Morgan Werkes, Germantown High School Special Education Teacher. Catherine Hannikins, Germantown School District Social Worker. Leah Knoff, MacArthur Elementary Kindergarten Teacher. Lindsay Bauer, MacArthur Elementary, it says ASL Teacher, which is an interpreter. And I'll point out that that is a role that we have had, and this was a contracted position that now becomes our position, so we're excited about that. Melissa Tackey, Kennedy Middle School Eighth Grade Language Arts. Joy Keagle, Rockfield Elementary Four K Teacher. Dylan Isle, Germantown High School English Teacher. Morgan Inches, MacArthur Elementary. This is the second of our ESL positions, and now both are contracted employees with Germantown. Patricia Bangston, Amy Bell Elementary Third Grade Teacher. Paige Conney, Germantown School District Speech and Language Pathologist. Ava Conrad, Germantown School District School Psychologist. And Sam Schubering, Amy Bell Elementary Physical Education Teacher.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding consent agenda?
Just want to make one note. I was following along as Mr. Noack was going through. I think Ian McGilvery got...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Accidentally skipped over.
Lot of names.
Germantown High School Special Education.
Right. Ian McGilvery is a Special Education Teacher, Germantown High School. He was with us all year in a limited-term role, and now transitions into a regular. We're very happy for him.
Fantastic. Any other discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item 6, Finance Committee. Mr. Loaf.
Yes, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Full board, item 6A, committee meeting update. Brittany Altendorf asked, answered questions about the vouchers with, which Finance approved. There were seven questions. It took quite a bit of time. Note that these questions are not a let's stump our business manager type questions. It's just, they're just questions that if citizens were to read the vouchers and had questions, we're just picking up on things that citizens might see and asking those questions ourselves up front. Next item was the Monthly Variance Report, and I think the main takeaway there, while we covered everything, this will just be the Cliff's Notes version for everything tonight. The full board was in attendance for the Finance Committee. I think a big takeaway is we are still projecting that we will not have to borrow this summer for cash flow purposes. That's always good news that we don't have to pay interest on a short-term loan. Next item is, excuse me, full board item 6B, 2024-2025, excuse me, preliminary budget. The process of building the 2024-2025 budget starts in January of 2024 and concludes in October 2024 at the annual meeting and budget hearing. So if you want the full version of this, you'll go to the video of Finance Committee for earlier this evening. Anyway, we bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee to approve the 2024-2025 preliminary budget.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second? Is there any final discussion?
I think it's worth mentioning, there are quite a few spreadsheets in the Finance Committee material, and Brittany went through pretty much all of them, of course, not every number, but went through quite a bit of the material, and I guess we'll leave it at that.
Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Okay, next thing was full board item 6C, 2024-2025 Desktop and Chromebook Replacement. Jeff Crawford was absent this evening, excused. Brittany Altendorf filled in for him. This covers 650 Asus CR1100 Chromebooks with a unit price of $248, with an additional Google Chrome Education License, unit price of $29.75, and replacement of 61 HP 400 desktops for $567. So the motion to approve, motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the purchase of 650 Chromebooks from BDJ Tech for $180,537.57 and 61 desktops from TKK Electronics for $34,587, totaling $215,124.50, plus financing charged to the appropriate capitalization and lease accounts in the general fund.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
And that was it for the Finance Committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Loaf.
You're welcome.
Item 7, Personnel Committee.
The Personnel Committee met tonight, June 10th, 2024. Items on the agenda began with reports and updates, all covered by Mr. Mike Noack. The committee did not have to come forward with any actions or recommendations on those, and just previously before this, Mr. Noack spoke to teacher resignations and contracts. There's no unfinished business, and new business was pretty much occupied by employee handbook updates. Some of them were single word, being dropped or added, along with lengthy paragraphs that I would suggest that anybody interested in seeing or hearing them, review the YouTube video covered, and is there a way for people to get those recommendations, those changes, the handbooks, if they requested them? It's in the notes.
Yeah, I think it would, we don't republish, and it's an internal document.
And we had two major updates that Mr. Pollak read in the motion when it came forward for approval. Has that been updated yet, or?
I have not had time between...
I did expect you to, so what are we doing in case?
I will do that this evening.
Could I have Tracy reread it then? Just so we know, or not necessary?
I think they could refer back to, there was a change with language related to survivorship and post-employment benefit. Dylan needs spouses or dependents versus the actual employee upon death.
So that was coming forward to the board for approval for the positive recommendation. And that's it? Well, that's what I was just asking.
Oh, that's what you, okay. That has to be read.
Well, that's what I was asking, so can Tracy re, do you have the verbiage, Tracy?
Sure.
That's what I was saying, is the motion came forward with the positive recommendation, but with the updates Tracy has in.
So, yep, so the positive recommendations coming forward, here's the detail on the changes that were made during the meeting. Page 4, the...
Uh, page four, the Admin Handbook under Survivorship, uh, shall now read, "In the event of the retiree's death prior to exhaustion of this benefit, the district will continue its contributions in the same manner to the surviving spouse for the remainder of the retiree's benefit. A surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue the benefit provided or until the spouse attains Medicare/Medicaid eligibility by payment of the premiums to the board, subject to the rules of carriers." There's an additional update under the Teaching Staff Handbook, page four, under Contracts. Uh, the, the original said after September first, he she shall forfeit two thousand dollars with four thousand in parentheses. It shall read four spelled out thousand dollars. And lastly, under Professional Technical Employees Handbook, page three, under Insurance, there's some verbiage in there under Health and Dental Insurance that had, uh, was still in there as far as professional technical employees averaging at least thirty-five hours per week or, there was a need to strike the word "or." So those were the changes that were made during the meeting that are being brought forward with a positive recommendation.
So those changes to the Employee Handbook come forward with a positive recommendation from the committee to the full board. Does not require a second? Is there any further discussion? Me, sorry. Uh, I'd just add, um, specifically, I think Mr. Loes and Mr. Brown have both alluded to it. We have the committee meetings where most of this work is done. There was a lot of discussion and sometimes, um, when we're talking policy or handbooks, language gets changed during those conversations. Um, so it's not reflected in this packet that was put together in accordance with, uh, published times. Uh, those, those conversations are recorded. That's why we record all of our committee meetings and people can take their time to view that at a later date to kind of understand what we just talked about more. We were all here for that conversation, um, and participated in it even though some of us aren't on that committee. We appreciate that, Mr. Brown. Um, so take, take your time. If you have any questions on that, please refer back to that committee meeting once it gets published. Um, and the action, the language that was initially intended to be is in this packet that you would see attached to this meeting, but some of that has been updated through that conversation, which is what they just discussed. And that will be, um, updated prior to the publishing of the handbooks. So with that, if there's no other discussion, came with a positive recommendation, does it need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item eight, New Business. Sorry.
Nope.
Item eight, New Business Discussion, uh, Eight A, Discussion Action to Approve the Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five Elementary KMS GHS Student Handbooks, Dr. Chris Royer.
So I started the meeting off by reporting that the school year just ended. However, we're in the process of finalizing online verification that will take place at the end of July. Um, so with the timing of tonight's board meeting, we're bringing forward the elementary, the middle school and high school student handbooks. You'll see that the elementary and high school have no proposed changes. If you remember back to last year when these were proposed, there was massive changes to all of our handbooks. Um, the only changes that are being recommended tonight are at Kennedy Middle School, related to the new bell schedule, some technical word changes with gold office, blue office versus main office and student services, um, so that there's a true designation of what the purpose of those offices are. Um, the change in the class dismissal time to two forty-five, I believe from two forty-three because of the new bell schedule. And then, um, language related to water bottles in classrooms. Nothing earth-shattering this evening, but technical changes that, um, Mrs. Guerin is recommending this evening.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed Germantown School District's Handbooks for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second. Mr. Pollock with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Eight B, Discussion Action to Approve the KMS GHS Co-Curricular Handbooks, Dr. Chris Royer.
Thank you. Dr. Nertl cannot be here because of a planned vacation this evening, so I am presenting, um, the, similar to the school handbooks, the co-curricular handbook, um, edits and modifications as this would be part of the registration process where families of students who are in co-curriculars, um, would sign off on this, on these handbooks, just like our student handbooks in that online verification process. Um, I am projecting a document that's not in the board packet that did, um, provide some additional edits. It's also on the large screen up here, Heather's projecting, um, related to, um, the very first edit for both KMS and GHS, the purpose of offerings, where there's an actual piece that we're asking our parents to engage in when it comes to, um, parents and co-curriculars. The, in the packet, what's published has been revised still today, um, with some further language. Um, we're asking that this, that I'm presenting right now or projecting be, um, supplement or take the place of what's in the packet, um, to provide almost a code of conduct for our parents, um, as participants in their child's co-curricular careers, both at KMS and GHS. We hold our student athletes and, um, uh, club participants to a code of conduct and we would ask the same of our parents about providing, um, positive support to their child as well as the team. And if there is concern about, um, officiating, the coaching, the advising, that they do that in a respectful manner and outside of the actual activity that's taking place and also be a good role model, um, towards their child to set that positive example attitude and effort, um, for not only their son or daughter, but also their teammates and the opposing team. Um, we know that in high school and middle school athletics, as well as clubs and activities, um, it's, it's high stakes, right? We have, we have very competitive teams here, um, and we play in a very competitive conference and everyone wants to win, but at the same time, we need to model as the adults also good sportsmanship and provide process when it comes to, um, questioning maybe coaching or the refereeing or whatever it might be in that given situation. So that is a major add that you would see to the handbook this evening for both middle and high school, that language be, would mirror both. It also gives us something to fall back onto when we have to address issues, um, that do come up with parents, um, related to our co-curriculars when we have over eighty percent of our high school participating in that. That's a large parent base as well. Um, the other minor changes relate to, um, language provided by the WA, WIA as well as, um, replacement costs and transportation. We did strike out cheerleading at both levels as we have not run a cheerleading program in years. We have not had anyone that wants to participate and/or coach, so we're removing that currently as an offering. If there is in the future interest in that, then we would add that back into our, our handbook language around cheerleading. So with that, I ask that, um, you approve with the modification presented here. I apologize if it did not get to you in, in print sooner, but, um, there was some more language we wanted to add today.
Uh, similar to what the discussion was in the hand, uh, employee handbooks, uh, this is modification to the proposed initial modifications and it's highlighted in green with the red red action there. Dr. Royer spoke to some of the needs behind that. I think it also gives us the ability with some of the events, the events, but some of the scenarios we've seen play out with visiting, um, schools, uh, families, uh, within our buildings and some of the actions that we've had to take. And Mr. Nertl's seen, seen on sidelines, um, we can kind of take this document to those districts and say, this is what we hold our parents accountable to. Um, we would appreciate if you did the same when they visited our facilities. And this does extend when our, when our parents are representing their students at external facilities, so. Thank you for working on those changes and updates. I will hear a motion.
A motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five KMS and GHS Co-Curricular Handbooks and Addendums as presented.
Second. Mr. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, uh, the section to the parent. I was very impressed with it when I read it. Um, it's a section that I don't think we should need, but I think in this day and age we need it, so thank you for including that and, uh, looks good.
Portions of this were taken from, um, a presentation that's done for parents for co-curriculars, but this formalizes it more and you're signing off on your child's co-curricular handbook as the guardian or parent and you have expectations as well because not everyone necessarily saw that presentation. This is a more formal approach.
Yeah, it's nice. Uh, I think we've all seen cases that have made the local news or the national news and I don't think we want to make the local news much less the national news either, so this is a good, good addition here. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. C, Eight C, Discussion Action to Approve Summer IEP Diagnostic Contracts, Ms. Crystal Callen.
Um, yeah, so the, the staff members listed here for the summer diagnostics are, um, speech pathologists, school psychologists, special education teachers, um, and regular education teachers that are, um, mostly actively involved in ongoing, um, evaluations that have already been set in motion, those timelines have started.
So this evening you're looking for the approval for them to continue that work into the summer, correct?
Yes, yes.
Um, Ms. Callen, would you define IDEA for the group as outlined in your report? That, what that acronym stands for?
It's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
So in order to comply with the, the federal law, um, we're seeking the approval of additional hours for these listed staff at that, those dol, not to exceed those dollar amounts, to finalize testing and, um, IEP work to meet with families to determine placement for next fall.
With that, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the Summer IEP Diagnostic Contracts as presented.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Eight D, Discussion Action to Approve Super, uh, Discussion Action to Approve the Supplemental Teacher Contract, Ms. Crystal Callen and Mr. Mike Nowak.
Yeah, so the supplemental teacher contracts, um, again, it is a combination of school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, um, and depending on that, that role or their role, um, it's additional contractual hours that, um, are needed to do kind of, um, again, depending on their role, the counselors to work on scheduling, um, um, Susan Bass, as you can see, is the master scheduler, so she puts together the whole thing. Um, the school social workers work on logging for McKinny Vento students, um, creating, um, presentation for teachers and staff once school starts and, you know, finishing up some of the tasks from the school year. Um, again, they, uh, they submit, um, a list of their proposed activities that, that we review and then they keep track of those hours.
We review their, um, which would be post-July one work that's summer-related, um, meeting with families, working with individuals, um, individual cases. Something that Mr. Nowak and I have talked about in the future is rolling in these unique cases, which is common in other school districts, is rolling their number of hours with that dollar amount into their actual contract. So if I'm someone who has an additional four days, um, that would be a hundred and ninety-four day contract for them next year with this per diem rate, so we're not doing this separate piece, but those are all vetted, um, through Pupil Service, Human Resources, myself, to determine what they're requesting is applicable for summer work. And they are unique extenuating circumstances. That's why you see mostly pupil service, um, employees on here because it's just work that has to get done for reporting purposes, legal compliance, um, as well as, um, unique situations. Mrs. Callen, um, referenced McKinny Vento, that is, um, homeless families and working with them for transition plans that has to be done in the summer. We can't wait till school starts or the contracted days start.
Um, you're not asking for that change now, you're just asking for the approval of these additional hours and pay?
And then next year when we reissue teacher contracts, we'll look at putting it actually in their contract language, a hundred and ninety days under the regular contract with an additional four days with a adjusted salary for them versus bringing unique ones. And then we can pre-plan sooner with those discussions.
I think in two for the employee, it helps them understand what, what we're looking for in that extended period, which is part of their work contract, which is similar as administration is a different workday contract.
Correct.
And certified staff, uh, but it, it provides, you know, that clarity going into it, which can only help.
Yeah, we, at the bottom, um, we just wanted to note that Catherine Heinekenz is the school social worker. We added on, um, additional days in this last week, um, because of the time that she started. She, I believe she started in October, um, she didn't have those hours, but... Yeah, the person that she replaced was approved for those hours and the work is still, still there, needs to be done.
Above this eighty you're asking for or this eighty is that?
She's listed twice.
Yeah, she's, we just made a special note at the bottom just to approve, um, days this week.
The first, on the first page, that would be post-July one, but, uh, Mrs. Callen's asking for, to show days.
I didn't see. Keep scrolling. Sorry, that's my fault. Thank you. I will hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five supplemental teacher contracts as presented.
A second.
Mr. Brown with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? I think both this and the last, um, motion are kind of examples of what continues, the work that continues through the summer past our school days. And a, and a lot of this is coming out of that office, in your office. Uh, I do want to take this time to thank you for stepping into that interim role for us over the last year. I know it's not easy, uh, to do, but it means it probably more than I know that it's not that easy, but, uh, it's appreciated that you were able to get in there and fill that role, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. E, Discussion and Action to Approve the Extended School Year Contracts, Ms. Crystal Callen.
So, yeah, so the last extended school year contracts that we're looking for approval on are for, um, uh, two different students that was deemed necessary per their IEP that they, um, um, continue in what we call extended school year. So they get, uh, usually between ten to fourteen additional hours during the summer and we want to prevent that, uh, reg, regression of skills. So there's been a proven track of regression, um, during an extended break. Um, so this is the, the three teachers. One is a, uh, sign language interpreter, one is a special education teacher, and one is a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, so specific to student needs, but work that, again, like you were talking about before, it needs to be extended a bit over the summer.
With that, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the Extended School Year Contracts as presented.
A second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious how it works. Does the teacher come in midsummer then to do this work or?
Yeah, um, actually there's a combination. So some go to the, actually some go to the home. In one, I think in one case, um, the parents are also learning sign language, so it's, you know, to benefit the student and the parents. Um, but most of them will come into Kennedy during our, um, summer school program and meet with students there. They, they kind of plan it with the families.
Okay, very good.
Okay, I missed one. I still mean all the things I said before. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. F, Discussion and Action to Approve Overnight Food Trip Re... F, Discussion/Action to Approve Overnight Field Trip Request, HOSA.
Thank you. The HOSA Nationals, which is the Future Health Professionals, otherwise formerly known as the Health Occupational Students of America, but now they just go by HOSA, it's not an acronym anymore, the name for future reference, will be held June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth at the George R. Brown Convention Center in Houston, Texas. Three students and one advisor will be attending the Nationals. These students qualified at the State Leadership, at State Leadership to have this opportunity. I believe when we shared a video of our academic and career planning, students talking about that previously, Ms. Fisher brought that from high school. One of our qualifiers here is the state president as well, so, I mean, we've got some great representation that should do well at Nationals. This cost is approximately four thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. All student fundraising, parents and/or donations will pay for registration, transportation, and lodging for the students and the advisor, so we're asking for approval for that overnight travel request tonight for the three students and the one advisor to, for travel to Houston, Texas.
I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for three students and one advisor to travel to Houston, Texas from June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, to attend the ILC HOSA Nationals.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
And we'll update you on the results of that at a future board meeting.
And yes. Seeing no further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That passes. G, Discussion/Action to Approve Overnight Field Trip, GHS Band. Dr. Chris Reuter.
Awesome. Mr. Bell, would you want to come up and say a little bit about this? I saw you sneaking around. Yeah, so Mr. Bell has brought forward tonight, asking that the Germantown High School Warhawk Band, which has been invited to perform in, I'll wait for him to name, where his performance is, in Spain at a parade, December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five through January sixth, twenty-twenty-six.
This would be a return to international travel for band programs. We have not, we were scheduled to go to Prague in twenty-twenty-one, and obvious reasons why we did not make that trip, and it is international trips within the band world have come back. The Spain trip is a, the highlight performance is in the Night of Kings Festival Parade in Spain. As the three kings come through on January fifth, they bring the gifts for the kids. This is our second time being invited to this parade, and it was one of the most fantastic events I've ever been a part of when we traveled there in twenty-twelve?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen. And just an outstanding performance, and it lines up to, I believe the fifth is a Monday, so that you have to go, the parade's on fifth, and it leans us to missing fewer days of school because of calendar. There will be travels to Segovia, Toledo, and performances in both of those places as well for the band students and the parents that choose to travel with us.
Thanks for providing, it's an amazing trip, to say the least. That's fantastic. Did I get a motion on that? I'll hear a motion on that, sorry.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for one hundred and seventy students, chaperones, and parents along with two advisors to travel to Madrid, Spain from December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five through January sixth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
Yes. I don't think I've ever seen an overnight travel request that's approaching six hundred eighty thousand dollars.
More than a half million dollars.
And normally, we would ask for them to share the stuff, but I follow the band on Facebook, and they always share pictures.
Yeah, good. I look forward to seeing pictures and videos from the trip.
And if you'd like to come and play like you did this past year before you went to DC, that's, the December board meeting would be a great practice.
We'll go to Seattle.
Verify with Heather first, we're really busy in the PAC.
I want to go back to high school.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr.